Officers. You can, uh, the standing orders are very thorough. They have very specific guidelines for the RN to assess and when to give medications and when not to. And in order for them to do the medications, the parents do have to give consent also for these meds to be given for their child. And they strongly encourage that the parents bring in the Tylenol or Motrin for their child. Um, I, the, I had a meeting last week with the school nurses and they strongly support having the standing orders. About three or four years ago, there was standing orders for nurses to give these medicines, but then the Department of Health decided they weren't going to be signing off on them. But now it's come another circle and now they're supporting having standing orders again for these very specific and it's very specific guidelines for being able to give these medications. So that's sort of a brief overview. Um, questions, concerns?
Board members, any questions or concerns for Dr. Schertz?
Dr. Schertz, you answered really my only question was, I thought the, in reviewing them, they were quite extensive and included at least the verbal consent from parents and just wanted to make sure that you and the rest of the nurses were on board with, uh, with implementation of this and it sounds like you are.
Yes, um, the nurses felt that, um, following the assessment and the guidelines that there's a lot of times that we could keep the child in school and treat them so they're comfortable while they're in school, but the, they wouldn't have to go home. Cause if you call a parent and their child has a sore throat and they're going to bring in cough medicine or medicine, most of the time they would just go ahead and take their child home. And so this way it'll save the parents a trip and also most likely keep the child in school.
Would you have individually packaged OTCs for those that wouldn't have brought something in personally?
The nurses discussed this and yes, they would prefer having individual doses like the Tylenol instead of having a bulk, instead of having just a big bottle, they'd rather have it individual packaged just to make sure that there wouldn't be a med error, you know, you know, we're human, things happen. So they would rather have it, um, individual package for dosage. The liquids, you, you know, for the smaller kids, you can't do that, you know, that doesn't work out as well. But for the older kids that can swallow pills, okay, the nurses wanted individual packets.
So Mr. President, Leslie, I, I just wanted to thank you for putting all that together. Um, and I think the biggest concern to me was, um, the parental consent. And as long as we have to obtain that verbal consent before we administer it, I think we're good in all of those guidelines there are all the, um, over the counter med orders did state, you know, parental consent obtained, that whole bit on the checklist. So, um, I, I, I think it makes sense and it helps to avoid delaying care and some parents can't get out of work to go deliver that to a child. Um, and so I, I think it's a big deal. Um, the other thing I just want to point out, I'm sorry, is, um, I've been texted by several people that the audio's not working for the meeting. Ben, I don't know.
Ben, did you hear that? Ben?
I, I've received a few messages as well.
We're working on it, but it, we do have closed captioning turned on, so they can read everything. I can restart the live stream.
So yes, Dr. Diaz, we would have parental consent and it would probably be included on the emergency form that they fill out when they register their child online. And then they put a check mark if they wanted all of the, um, standing orders or if they just wanted their child treated for fever. So the parents would have an option, um, you know, of what they want, but it would probably be part of, um, the online registration included and the emergency meds, because that's how it was done in past years. So it would be even better than verbal. It would be, um, so that would work out better.
So I guess I just want to clarify that they signed the written one at the beginning of the year, but then when they're actually, it was like, say, I signed that at the beginning of the year, but then they call and notify me that my kiddo has a fever or whatever, and then they still obtain the verbal consent that day, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's perfect, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any improvement on the audio from Ms. Montenegro or Dr. Diaz? Have you heard any more texts from it?
I haven't, but I can ask for feedback.
Let me ask, yeah, let me ask.
Yeah, let me know. I'd like to make sure that that's fixed before we move on. It, while we're waiting, any other questions or concerns for, for Leslie?
I guess, is it, are we adopting these tonight? Are we going to have more discussion?
That would be, I, Mr. Flores, I think it's the first read, so I don't think you would be able, I don't know how, it's just the first time you've seen them.
Right. I don't see it as action items, do I?
Right, action item.
Okay.
Anything further?
I guess just to clarify that she is for, she thinks that they would be beneficial for our district to adopt these, um, and that's how she would encourage us to move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Mr. President, uh, I guess the other thing that, uh, I think is important, um, maybe to communicate to all the staff district wide is that it's not okay to just hand out OTCs, um, to kids when they, when they request them, that, uh, that we've got to direct them to, uh, the school nurse to make sure that those protocols are followed and.
And that'd be something that we could take care of prior to the beginning of the year, is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Oh, yes, sir. That is absolutely something we can do.
Okay.
Um, I just got a text back saying that, uh, it, the stream is paused and it's just showing the replay of the beginning of the meeting. I know Ben's working on it, just so you have an update.
Yeah, I think he said he was going to try to restart the live. I think is what it said.
Ben, do you need us to do anything to get back on or what, what do you recommend, Ben?
Just hold tight for a second.
We also need to note that Patrick, what time Patrick got here, Mr. President?
Do you remember what time you got here, Patrick? I didn't see that on the, on the, on the screen.
There's no, there you go.
Patrick, what time did you get on?
About six after five or six.
Yeah, I posted the, uh, I posted the YouTube link for the YouTube livestream, which is my backup feed. It's on Facebook right now while I get the Facebook one running.
Should we wait or wait on you, Ben? You tell me what we need to do.
You, you can keep going. The, you can view the YouTube livestream.
Great.
And it has audio.
Okay, thank you.
On Facebook.
Thank you. Anything else for Leslie? Leslie, thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker. You're up.
Well, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Brown, Mr. Clough. Um, I believe I'm here to talk about possibly holding our graduation on the, uh, actual proposed date of May 1st, 2020. And, uh, one of the things that, um, we, we, uh, worked on, we worked on several, um, options, as you, as you guys well know, at the last board meeting, you guys were presented with alternative dates as far as graduation goes. And, uh, this has kind of been working in the, in the background, uh, for just in case of those dates didn't work. So basically what we did is, uh, we, we've been working on this quite extensively. It's, it's what we call the drive-in. I know Ms. Smith calls it the drive-through. I like to call it the drive-in graduation of 2020. This is a no-contact graduation, sorry, there's a big whistling sound coming in. I don't know if it's me or somebody else, so. Anyway, um, this is a no-contact graduation. Um, this will be held in the actual student parking lot and it will involve students staying in their cars with their families. And, um, basically it's going to be a graduation ceremony with vehicles. I know that sounds a little bit odd, it sounds a little bit different. I know schools such as TRC is running something similar to this and this is kind of where we got the idea, but not really. This is going to be Silver's unique own graduation. But, and I'm not sure if everybody's got the packet that I sent to Mr. Brown, I believe it was last week and Mr. Clough. I know, uh, Mr. Flores got a copy of it as well. But in that packet is pretty extensive guidelines that we will follow, um, to ensure the safety of the kids, the social distancing, all the PPE, uh, requirements are met and everything is completely sanitized and, and safe for all of our, uh, all of our graduates. And, um, just kind of give you a little background of why we went this route instead of pushing it until June and July. Uh, there's a couple of reasons. Most of the kids we talked to, uh, want to transition, they want to, they want to get out of high school, they want to be done and move on to their next life. We feel that if we keep pushing it further and further away from May, um, graduation is going to completely lose all, um, all its meaning towards these kids. And then the second thing is, um, it kind of goes back to the kids is, is that we've been asking them if we could do it some way, shape or form, hold a ceremony for you guys on your original date that's actually listed on your, uh, graduation invitations, uh, would you guys be willing to, you know, make some reservations on how it's done? And they, they were all for it. Most of the kids we talked to are very excited, very pumped up. They, they, they want something, they just want something to kind of close out this year and be done with high school. And I can't blame them. I mean, the situation that we've been in these past few months has been hectic on all of us, especially our seniors, due to the fact that a lot of them didn't get to participate in the usual senior stuff that we do at the end of the year. So we want to make sure that, that we send them out with the bang, we send them out with all the accolades and honors that they deserve. Um, it's just going to be done a little different, but I believe with the team effort that we have and, uh, the effort and, uh, you know, the stuff that Ms. Smith had put into this, put it all together and everything else, I think the kids are going to really, really, really appreciate what we've done for them. So I'm open for any questions. I guess my question is, does everybody have a copy of the packet that was sent?
I got the email from, from you, Mr. Coker. Did any of the other board members receive the packet on their email?
I, I don't recall.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
That I know of, I, I just looked again this afternoon, didn't see one, but I could have missed it.
Well, Dr. Diaz, more than likely what had happened is, is like I said, we, we weren't really putting this out until we got approval, obviously from Central Office and everything else. And just so you know, we have worked or I have talked to, uh, local police, I did talk to Chief Eddie Perthio, uh, and he's, he's, uh, on board with everything we want to do. The fire department's on board with everything we want to do. And then I have reached out also to the state police, um, and I'm working with Mr. Flores and his daughter to, uh, kind of expedite this, uh, this process for the state police to be involved. And it sounds like, and then based on the guidelines that, that we from Palms and Associates, uh, we are following every single one of those, uh, graduation, um, guidance, uh, guidelines from Palms and Associates as far, as far as following all the public health orders and, uh, coordinate, we are coordinating any parades, which we will have one at the end of the ceremony that goes through downtown. And then everything else will be, um, you know, followed to the letter. And Ms. Smith, I see you have clicked on, you want to add anything?
Mr. Coker?
Go ahead.
I, I know, I, I read it and it's very detailed with, with detailed, uh, instructions, but so the other board members know what we're talking about, could you briefly describe how the drive-through, driving graduation will work? Or Ms. Smith?
Yeah, yes, you and Ms. Smith.
Okay, so we are not talking about a public event here. We are talking about the graduate being the front passenger in a vehicle and what other, what other family members fit in that vehicle safely and, and via the traffic laws are allowed in. We're going to have one entry point, which would be the maintenance gate. We're going to do some filtering of cars, roll them down to where the ramp is at the base of the student parking lot. From there, we're going to put a number on their window and then we're putting them in a specific parking spot. That way we don't have to know who the kid is at that moment. Um, we're going to type their name into a list so that when that car rolls up, the announcer's going to know who that is. Once they get parked, we're going to go ahead and still have our Val and Sal and Student Council, uh, President do speeches. When we direct them to, they're going to pull their vehicle to, um, we have, I don't know, about five or six different locations, um, before and after they get their actual diploma where they can stop, the student can pose, the student is the only one out of the vehicle. There are no other personnel are allowed out of that vehicle. Parents can take pictures, um, social distancing will be at least eight feet between those items. Um, we're going to go ahead and, and plug that in. They go up the stairs at that moment, we're going to have their name announced, they'll go get their diploma case. I still have the professional photographer taking a photograph of them by our Fighting Cult. They'll go back down the stairs, couple more photo options. We still hope to do our confetti poppers. The student will pick that up, get back into the vehicle and the vehicles return to their parking spaces. Then, um, at the appropriate time, when all the students have gone through, Mr. Coker will do have them, the, again, just the graduate step out of the vehicle, um, turn the tassel, we'll play their class song, we'll do the confetti poppers on a three, two, one, like we did last year, then they return to the vehicle. They're just stepping out, not walking anywhere. They get back in the vehicle and at that point, we're going to have the, um, Police Department there in Silver City assist us with an actual parade so that we lead them from there to the downtown area and then lock up the gate and, and they're no longer in our facilities. Um, we did order masks for every student and staff member to wear that have the Silver High logo right on the front. Um, we plan on having all of the, the appropriate gear there. We are putting, planning on putting notifications out about COVID on the outside that, you know, if you're sick, don't come in, nobody's going to be allowed to leave the vehicle. We're, we have really tried to think of every possible scenario, but I think the way our team worked this through, we talked about what was safe, what could we do safely? And, and the only thing we can do safely is a no-contact graduation.
And board members, just so you know, I, I went ahead and emailed that entire packet that we were talking about to each one of you guys, so you should have it in your, uh, school email, uh, Dr. Diaz and, and Ms. Montenegro, Mr. Khan and Mr. McMillan, you guys should have that in your emails right now. And like I said, it's, it's pretty lengthy. Uh, Ms. Smith mentioned that, you know, as a team, we did meet together, we did, you know, try to think of every scenario and, and, and try to make sure, obviously the utmost importance was the safety of the students and everything else. So we, we, that was our driving force, obviously. And, and we put all this together and, and Ms. Smith, like I said, she, she worked tirelessly on putting everything down, you know, step by step. So if you guys go through it and everything, you're going to see that we, we are following the guidance for graduation ceremonies from Palms and Associates and also, uh, all the health orders that are in place, uh, from the governor as well.
Mr. Coker. Um, I did, I, like I said, I reviewed your, your plan. I also reviewed the, the memo that's sent from the PED regarding May graduation dates. And there was two, two spaces on that memo that said, anything, uh, before May 15th definitely has to meet with the governor's orders. And depending what the governor says after May 15th, we'll still have to meet with the governor's executive orders. I think, I think you're good either way and I just want to thank you for, you and your staff, Mrs. Smith and everybody else that participated because the seniors are excited. I, I've talked to several seniors and they're excited that this is going to happen, they have something to plan and look forward to, and I know it's taken a lot of work. And, uh, I know the parade is real nice with the bus, the Silver High bus leading the parade, um, and coordinating it with all the law enforcement and surrounding agencies has been a, a hard thing to do, but thank you. And I think it's, it would be a real good thing for the seniors in, in light of the crisis that we're in with COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, I just have.
Well, Dr. Diaz.
No, go ahead, Michelle.
Um, I just have a couple of questions. I, I know you can't really do the chicken before the egg, Mr. Coker, so I realize that you had to come here and have this conversation first, but how do you plan on disseminating the information to the families? Just because that's kind of up and coming pretty quickly if they have out of town people coming to their house. I, I mean, clearly we're all supposed to be doing the social distancing and that whole bit, but I, I don't, I don't claim to know how people are going to run this, it's complicated and I, hats off to you for coming up with something. But, um, that portion and then, um, as far as our role, are, are we going to be present? Are we going to stream it? How, I, I mean, I, I want to make sure the seniors feel special and I'm not trying to count us out, but I, I, I realize this is kind of a unique situation where we're trying to also minimize, um, foot traffic. So I, I just, we're happy to partake in any, uh, way, shape or form, I want to make that clear. Um, I, I just want to make sure that we're available, but you let, you lead the way for us there.
Correct. And I'm glad you asked, asked those two questions because those are two of the things that are actually on the packets and outlined, uh, as far as your guys' participation, as far as disseminating the information to the parents and the, and the, uh, and the students. I've had very good success, uh, emailing the seniors on a weekly basis. I've had a lot of response, even though they don't like totally respond to me. Um, I'll give you an idea, uh, Ms. Smith and I and a, and a team of other teachers went out today. If you guys haven't seen it, I know Mr. McMillan has, uh, but we went out and delivered yard signs to all of the seniors. We planted them on their, in their, uh, yards. So if you drive by and you see one that says home of a 2020 Fighting Cult senior, a yard sign that was either done by myself and Ms. Smith or done by a, a couple other, uh, team of teachers that we had. Um, so in my dealings of going out there, uh, you know, a couple seniors came out and they were, they were just grateful that we're there. And, and one of the things I do check, uh, every time I talk to any senior is, uh, are you getting my emails? Are, are you guys seeing? And, and every single one of them said yes. Um, we also have, uh, other avenues to, uh, utilize. We can do, we are doing robo-call to just kind of remind and those probably go out two or three times at least before the event to, to remind everybody and everything else. I think most of the kids kind of foresaw something was going to happen May 21st. They really weren't liking the June dates and everything, so they still were planning things regardless of if we were doing a graduation or not. They were still planning on a graduation party on that weekend, so they will probably have family and relatives in town. Um, I just spoke to our valedictorian who's up in Colorado and, and she, yes, I, obviously she will be there and her grandparents are coming down. They're in the actual ceremony, that's going to be interesting. But, um, most of the kids that I, that I've talked to, um, have received emails from me and, uh, we also have our Facebook page, which we'll blast on, uh, radio announcements. One of the things I wanted to make sure is this date's secure and we can do this is before I contact the radio. And, um, once I have that approval, the radio will be blasting it, uh, non-stop, graduation on May 21st, contact paper. Uh, we got everything kind of in motion, it's just kind of sitting in the wings right now until we get the approval. Now, as far as your guys.
Yeah, I was going to say, Dr. Diaz, um, we do have you guys situated along with, um, our, our superintendents in the cult stable and you will be, uh, social, socially distanced there. Um, we thought it's still essential that you be there and that the kids and, and communities see you guys there. And then we also are going to be encouraging students to decorate their cars. Um, again, we're going to give some guidelines for that because we don't want anything inappropriate on those, just like their hats. So, um, we, we have some sheets that we're, we'll finalize, uh, tomorrow morning if approved and then we'll go ahead and start getting that information out.
Thank you.
You bet.
And that was my question, just our role and I, I am reading through your email and I do see that we'll be in the stable, so we'll be in the stable.
Yes, ma'am. But I'll give you, I'll make sure you guys still have a nice comfy seats.
And then just, I guess at some point you'll let us know where to park and all that jazz. Maybe we need to park in the front or somewhere else.
Yeah, more than likely what we'll do for you guys is either have you park on the west side of, of our school in the horseshoe if there's enough available parking. Because like Ms. Smith said, I mean, you know, we're going to have limited staff as far as, uh, helping out, just mainly people helping out with the parking and moving the vehicles around. Uh, we can't have our full, uh, lineup of, of staff, but we did encourage them to kind of pick a spot along the parade route and, and cheer on our kids. So, and just so you know, uh, Ms. Smith and I did go downtown and we did notice that the hardware is up on the, uh, light post all the way downtown. And I'm hoping within the next couple of days, you guys will start seeing the senior banners that, uh, we, uh, had made up for those kids to go up as well. And that's basically where we want to end the parade is downtown where their senior banners are and everything else. So.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. Any other questions? Mr. Coker?
I do.
Go ahead, Patrick.
So if we have seniors graduating, are we going to have that opportunity to hand the diploma or how is that going to happen, Mr. Coker? Mrs. Smith?
You know, uh, go ahead.
Our plan is a no-contact graduation. Um, I think to, to follow the safety protocol, we have to remain a minimum of six feet away from everybody. So it's go, it's not going to be what we want it to be, but it's going to be what we have to do in order to meet the safety protocol, um, and the guidelines within Palms as well.
That's fine.
Thank you. And anything else?
Um, Mr. President, uh, I would, you know, I, I would agree, I think, uh, with what, uh, Mr. Coker and, and Mrs. Smith have done is, uh, um, to proceed with the, the graduation kind of as scheduled, I think postponing it was, was, uh, you know, an, an option, but as we've gotten closer, I think this will be a, it'll be, uh, not, not what we all want, but, uh, it'll be a unique experience and, uh, and, and, uh, time for them to, to make that, that next step in their, their life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Mr. Coker?
Kudos for them. They've, I mean, that's, this is really cool, this is really amazing and I just thank you guys for your leadership and getting something done, um, and within your, within the, the boundaries of what, what you had to make sense of. I'm really impressed, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Coker.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Um, we will have spaces assigned for, uh, board and the staff that are working, so no worries, we'll definitely have a place for you to park and you'll know where that is, uh, before you arrive that night, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Coker, I know in your busy schedule.
Yes, sir.
Take a note of it. Thank you for going out of your way for Teacher Appreciation Day and going out to all the teachers and making them feel special. I know, uh, it was very greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. It, it was fun. I mean, you know, uh, it's, it's been a while, we've all been kind of cooped up in our houses and stuff, so it was really kind of fun to get out and see this staff in their natural habitat, if you will. And, uh, yeah, I, I've got, we, you know, my wife, uh, accompanied me with, with that delivery and everything and it was really, really nice just to kind of get out and see where people live and what they're doing. And, and I, I will have to say, they're some of the cleanest and most upkept yards these past few weeks. Uh, it, it definitely looks like somebody's been home for a while.
Mr. Coker, are you saying that sarcastically because my weeds have not been cut?
Yeah, your wife did mention that, no. She said they were, they were done now. Your wife did mention that. No, she said they were, they were done now. So I won't have to worry about that.
Come by next week, okay?
I will do so, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Coker, Mrs. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Janine Garnie, Cliff.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Brown, Mr. Clough and Ms. Hernandez. Thank you guys for inviting me this evening. We're actually taking the opposite approach, I guess, of Silver High. When I contacted all of our seniors, they and their parents, they were pretty adamant about waiting to have graduation. They really want to have a traditional graduation. We have 13 seniors and one early graduate. So it's not the amount of students that Mr. Coker and Ms. Smith have. So of course, that's a little more manageable. What I discussed with the parents and students was if the governor even allowed 50 to 100 people to gather. I mean, obviously for Cliff, that's a manageable, a manageable amount of people. We can issue tickets to students, that type of thing. So they're wanting to wait and Mr. Coker and Ms. Smith were nice enough to allow us to steal their graduation dates for the summer. So we have some potential great dates, I believe, that are in your packet. June 12th and 19th, July 10th and 17th, July 31st, and then August 7th. If we get towards the middle of July and things are not progressing to the point where we're going to have any type of gathering 50 to 100 or whatever, whatever it may come to be. I did let the students know that we would have another hangout session and have that conversation about going ahead and doing something like Claudia and Shane and Silver High is doing. They've already sent me everything that they've done. So we would probably do something similar out in Cliff as Silver is doing. But they do want to hold out for hope that they will get to have a traditional graduation in the gym. And I know, of course, it will probably be modified as well, but they are holding out for that hope. So those are the dates that we've selected for the graduation. I know it's a lot of dates, but we were selecting the Friday prior to Shane. And then when they decided to go ahead and do their drive-in date, he allowed us to have his dates as well.
So, so Ms. Garnie, I know we have to vote on it tonight. So maybe if you could tell us, again, we're sort of speculating on what the governor is going to do by, by June. And hopefully the orders will be more relaxed than they are right now. But could you give us maybe one date and then a secondary date in case that date isn't available because of the governor?
I'm looking and hoping for June 19th.
June 19th.
Yes, I was hoping that that might be far enough away.
So that'd be your first choice?
Yes, sir.
And if June 19th didn't work?
I would hope for July 10th or 17th, whichever would work best for you guys. I mean, honestly, it doesn't matter. Like I, we have 14 kids, so.
Yeah. So I think for the purpose of the action items, we could do, we could vote on, on June 19th. If the governor allows it as your primary date. And if for some reason it isn't, then July 10th will be your second date. And if anything changes by then, we'll have, certainly have another meeting. We can discuss it at more length if we need to at the next board meeting.
Yes, sir. And at that time, I would probably, especially at the beginning of July, be talking to the students and the parents about if they want to just do something like Silver's done. So that, because I do agree with Shane and Claudia, you know, we do need to wrap up the year. But also for the kids, you know, they're really wanting to have that traditional graduation and their parents want to see them graduate. So I'm out here, we've taken kind of a different, a different wait and see approach. But I do think what Claudia and Shane have done in Silver is just awesome. I really think they took it to the next level as far as doing the banners downtown and the parade and all the precautions that they've taken. It's just really great to see that. So I'll let the kids and the parents know June 19th and July 10th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, Mr. Flores, did you want me to present on our calendar as well or is that later in the agenda?
No, you can present right now for the calendar.
Okay, thank you. So again, we're here with our Cliff Schools calendar. We did present three different options to our teachers and staff this year. The first option, all the options are adding five minutes to the schedule to account for some extra time in our days to make sure that we have snow days or other days that, that we wouldn't have to make up necessarily if something happened. So our first calendar, and this is the one that the teachers and staff did select. Basically, it is giving us the Thursday off of Fair Day. And then we will not have an early release day in December for our students. That will be a full day prior to the break. And then, of course, we've added those five minutes. So that gives us some additional time again for the Fair Day and for those extra snow days. Mrs. McCain was so nice to help me look at this calendar back and forth several times. So we are proud to say that it is corrected in all aspects. And the reason that the staff and that we discussed the Fair Day off on Thursday is we do have a lot of students that are showing and they're missing. I would have to say, I was astonished at how many kids weren't at school that day. And it was almost not worth having school. So, and then what happened too, the kids weren't at school and then the parents were checking them out to go to the fair and things. So we just thought that it would probably be better for our school to take that day off and everybody go ahead and go enjoy the fair and then go ahead and go a full day before Christmas. So are there any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Garnie, I would just like to say thank you for also working with your seniors during this tough time and getting the pulse of what their feeling is towards graduation. I know you've been in contact with all of them and we'll also try to do the best we can and make it special for them as well. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, we've ordered different, different items. We've been to their homes and things. We have everybody calling in and checking on them. And of course, we're smaller, so we can do a little more personal contact, I believe, just because of the fact it is, it is a smaller community. But we've heard good things. The seniors are excited and they're very hopeful to have a traditional graduation. But we know in the end, if we need to do something like Shane and Claudia are doing for Silver High, that will make it special for our students as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item number five, information to the board. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, administrative staff, community members. I would like to, before I begin with, with my part of the agenda, I want to sincerely thank the community for, as well as the, the staff and students for their input on the survey that we, we sent out last week. We've had fantastic response and the comments are very, very pertinent, very worthwhile information that administration can take into consideration as we try to work through implementing some return to school practices and procedures. So I sincerely want to thank everybody for that. Secondly, I want to take a moment to let everybody know that, as you'll hear a little bit later on, when Ms. McCain is, is giving her part of the presentation, it is going to be a tough budget. It's not a secret to anybody. There's no way we can try to paint a rosy picture. But it's going to be a tough budget, but it is something that I'm going to ask folks to reflect back on. When I first arrived here, we were looking at a $2 million shortfall. And I don't believe we're going to be anywhere near that with this particular budget. And even though we had a $2 million shortfall, by the grace of God, and I literally mean that, thank God, that we were able to overcome that $2 million shortfall to where we are averaging about 3%, 3% cash balance, give or take a little bit. And so with the staff that we have, the administrative staff, the teaching staff, the support staff, and, and the list goes on and on. We, we can and we will be fine with this budget as well. It's, it is something that we've worked hard on. And I would also like to share that in our district, we only have two superintendents. And there are districts that are our size and even smaller that have more superintendents. And they at least have an HR director, whereas Mr. Clough and myself, we take on those duties as well. So it is literally just Mr. Clough and myself that are, are trying to manage the, the work of four superintendents prior to my arrival. And in other districts, an HR director. So we are doing everything we possibly can to, to do our part at central office to meet the needs financially of the district. And we, we are concentrating on, on our enrollment. Again, we want to focus on the, the need to keep our students safe, our staff safe, our schools clean and disinfected. And so we have worked very hard with that. And I believe that we are, we're doing a great job with that. And we're looking forward to the opportunity to, to receiving students back in our school buildings as well as our staff. So with that said, I, I want to thank again the community for your input. And by the grace of God, we will be back in there soon and ready to get, get our district back, back in order in the brick and mortar building, as well as the, the online portals that we were more than likely going to have to, to implement as well. And one thing that we're definitely taking into consideration, I, we have a weekly superintendent meeting with all superintendents across the state. And this morning was that meeting. And the one guideline that, that is loud and clear is that be prepared for social distancing to be involved in, in all kinds of areas, busing, cafeteria, before school, after school, hallways, things of that nature. So we're getting that message as well from the community. So again, we just want to let you know that the feedback that we're receiving, we are reading it and we are taking it to heart. And we are going to be coming up some plans of how we can effectively implement those procedures. So item number one, under my portion, information to the board, I just want to inform the staff and students, members of the board, as well as the community that it is now official, the staff conduct with students policy, G as in George, B as in boy, E as in Edward, B as in boy, B as in boy, as well as regulation are part of the, the official policies of Silver Consolidated Schools. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. And secondly, the second item is the IDAB application for the 2021 school year. It is due June 5th and we were hoping that it would be available for us tonight so that Ms. Hopwood would be able to present it to you all for approval. Unfortunately, it was not given to her until very late, therefore she needs to have time to work on it. And it again, it's due June 5th. So I just want to give the board a heads up that we will probably have to have a special session in which that will be the only item on the agenda, at least at this point. That will be the only item on the agenda. So that should be very, very quick. But I wanted to inform the board and the community that that is in progress. Thank you, Mr. President.
Questions, comments for Mr. Brown? Okay, B, Mr. Clough.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, administrative staff, community. I have a short update tonight. I'm going to start with some good news. First and foremost is we had our 120-day count certified last month. And our 120-day count came in at 2513 and we ended last year at 2433. So we show a plus 80 right now going into the end of year reporting. So that's significant considering we had been on decline. So we think we stabilized the drops. So I think we're in a good, good shape right now. And we don't expect many withdrawals. We haven't seen many withdrawals during this time of the COVID shutdown. So 2513 is what we're at currently with the 120-day count. So, and then secondly, to echo some of Mr. Brown's sentiments, I'm presenting with you the handbooks tonight. But keep in mind, there may have to be some serious changes made depending on what happens with the guidance from the governor and what's going to happen with social distancing. So I'm asking for preliminary approval of the handbooks for tonight. I gave you the guidelines of what was done, but we may really have to look at some of our policies and update them in our handbooks. The initial plan was to have initial approval tonight and any addendums we bring forth next month or in July, because we do not print the handbooks until late July. And that's if we do print handbooks this year. So we have to make that determination as well, depending on how this is going to happen. Because one of the things we may have to address are some of the changes that could happen with online learning or blended learning environments with kids attendance and all those things that are coming out during the COVID-19. So we've done some preliminary work. By no means is it completely done. So I'm just asking for preliminary improvement and just remind the board that if we do make any addendums of approval, all we have to do is notify parents and that includes if we happen after we approve them in July and any changes we make, we just have to provide notification by email, letter, phone call and documented that we've notified parents of any changes. They're responsible to check them out since they're all in line. So that's kind of the approach we're taking. Then we're also working on coordinating all the elementary activities and having a common elementary handbook with regards to the discipline matrix and all that stuff. So we're doing all that work right now, but it's kind of murky with what's happening with social distancing and everything else. So we may be bringing forth more recommendations and may have to ask for a reapproval of a handbook at a future date.
Okay.
We need, before I forget, Mr. President, we need to have preliminary approvals until we start our registration processes and get those out online. So we make sure we have the registrations going for all our buildings and we've kind of put that on hold, not knowing what was going to happen beginning of next year. So we can start our registration process, preliminary approval of the district handbook, and then we can notify parents after any changes after that date.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions and mainly just about processes for the handbook. I know, I was very appreciative of your email there, Mr. Clough, as far as kind of things that were outlined and goals for the handbook. It's a hard time right now to get all that together. So are we looking at trying to kind of clarify the questions that you had in there about the truancy and the discipline matrix before our, our next meeting with those revisions?
That's a very good question, Dr. Diaz. I would appreciate board input because right now our handbooks depict what our processes are. And sometimes our processes are supersede what the policy actually reads, like the attendance policy. We do five and 10-day notices because we think it's important to stay on top of, top of kids, make sure to do it. But the law actually states, you look at the difference between 8.5 and 35 days, that's a big gap. So I would like to get some guidance from the board so I can lead the discussion with you in mind. Do we want to, do we want to show our actual practices so we're proactive? Or do you want it to be more towards the policy end? On my end, I think it's more important we supersede the policy, especially in attendance areas. So that way we can keep kids on track and we can stay on top of them. Now, we have the guidance of what's going on with the maximum number of days, but nothing says that we can have more contact with kids to make sure we track their attendance. So, so things like that, I appreciate a discussion tonight of whether you read the handbook, look at the processes we want to use. Or have it aligned to the policy of what, of what actually is, what's actually our policy book.
I, I think that's a bigger discussion and I really appreciate that approach. I kind of feel like we've spoken to processes in the past and it left it, to me, it left too much wiggle room and that led to the inconsistency as far as the discipline in the past. So to me, I feel like our athletic handbook is, is pretty concrete when it talks about first, second, third offense, that kind of roadmap. And to me, that's the matrix that I envision so that there's more consistency. And it's more, you know, when we were talking about the, the, you know, consistent kind of stepwise progression of discipline. To me, we're not the people to be making the law enforcement decision about, for example, you know, may always use the example of marijuana, but for example, if you had some illicit substance on, on board, you know, it's not for us to determine how much you had on hand to decide if it's, you know, you know, what level of offense at a legal level. For us, it's really up to us at an institutional level to decide what that, that consequence looks like. And we also talked about incorporation of resources because a lot of times it's self-medicating for the mental illness and other things that go along with that. So to me, the one thing about the athletic handbook that we did is we tied in the option for opting into some of those resources to minimize the penalty, right, the consequence. And so I would like to see more of that in the, the overall handbook for all students because I don't think that should just apply to people in extracurricular activities. I mean, it's, that's when we're trying to reach out to kids. And that's more what I'm looking for when we talk about the discipline matrix, the first, second, third offense. So that way we talk about, there's not this huge discrepancy in how one kid is, you know, disciplined compared to another. And I think it's, you know, hard for administrators, if that's not concrete data in front of them, then they're. then they're just trying to do the best they can case by case basis, but it leads to inconsistency.
Thank you for the input. I I know our principals, we've been talking about that when we've had the handbooks coming in, they're due this Friday to me, and we're going to have the meetings with them and discuss those types of things because I think the last time our metrics, matrix actually went before board board approval like two thousand was like 2014. So we really have to look at that and that was probably a continuation of a prior matrix because I can't find any other, any other further data of when a matrix was presented.
And that and that was my email to you, Mr. Clough, was the same kind of thing. I mean, in in that expulsion hearing that came before us, I mean, we had an athlete and we had a student. And so there was inconsistencies between the athletic handbook and the student handbook. And so I think bringing those to be with in line, just like Michelle talked about, just makes it easier to to, you know, discipline. And and I thought that was our goal, you know, it was kind of like, let's do the athletic and then let's try to mirror the student handbook after the athletic. Um, and I think I think that's where we're at. I mean, I know that's what I want. I think that's what I'm hearing Michelle say. Um, is just try to get it very in line.
We will try to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Yeah, I I agree with the consistency with the discipline. But, um, and and my question was on the attendance because I saw some discrepancy between what was in the policy versus what was in our handbook. And so that was my question to you. And and so on this aspect, I would, I would say I'm leaning more towards um, reaching out earlier, like what's described in our handbook versus what's in our policy, which as you said, uh, with that 20% is like 30 some days.
Yeah, 35 point something.
And and so I think that's, I think that's a little bit too long to wait to to be notifying, um, or taking steps to try and correct absenteeism. So in in this case of attendance, I would, you know, even though we're not being consistent across policy and handbook, I would, I would be for intervening earlier, even though it's not, uh, in policy. I mean, the other thing we could look at would be to make it consistent on the policy side and and bring those dates up and in line with what's in the handbook.
I would agree.
Third.
And members of the board, nothing says that we that we can't treat attendance differently than the other part because we'd be more proactive because of the way the attendance laws are written and the way we put our supports for that inside our title programs and federal support. We can have a process that is actually more intervention based than if we would just wait to keep the policy. I agree that the attendance and keeping kids in school is very important. So we can come up with a process, um, with some interventions that are that supersede the policy. And I think all of us believe that having that happen is better for kids to keep parents informed and get them in school more often.
I do agree with Mike that if that's going to be what we go with, it really, our policy should speak to the same language as our handbook. And so we'll probably want to change the policy in that in that particular instance.
All right, we can draft up some options. Um, we've had a lot of discussion because secondary is much different than elementary. So we may have to look at both those, both those rounds with regards to how we interact with that because there's also the provision inside our policy. Uh, it's also 20% of classes. So how do you calculate the class? And we have to have all those discussions of doing it versus secondary versus pretty easy for an elementary with a third grader. You're in that class all day, but how many classes the kid starts skipping class for rule history? That's a different boat, different entity you have to deal with inside of that.
So, so Mr. Clough, um, you're asking for preliminary approval for the handbook tonight, correct?
Correct.
And any changes, uh, can be done just with notification of the parents through email, correct?
Yeah, but we could also choose that if we bring back additional policies that substantially change it, we can re-adopt the policy and have them either notified, or I would prefer sending out notice again and have them resigning the handbook with any major changes. So that way they're fully aware of the complete changes that have gone on inside of that. We just need to have something up. So we go to start preliminary registering students right now. We're kind of behind eight ball because of COVID. Um, to make sure we can start the registration process for our lower grades and then any major changes, we can send out notice to them that there's been a change and then have them resign the handbook at a future date if the board chooses to do it, if we choose to do it that way on the adoption.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. President, my only other question is, uh, I know we keep talking about, um, brainstorming and and implementing changes. Are you going to take that on as administration or is there going to be like a task force to do that or?
With regards to a task force, that might be considered, but with this, with social distancing, trying to get people all connected on the same platforms could be difficult. What we could do is come forward and I'll keep the board informed of what's occurring and have you guys as a network out. Um, I think that'd probably be the best approach that I'll try to get it to you guys well before next month's board meeting. And maybe you guys can reach out and scan some people because I know we've had some initial conversations with parents at some of the community meetings I've been at lately. Um, virtually and talking to them about drug and alcohol policies, like with the with the nurses and like that. Um, some of those things are coming through more and more evident into virtual society. And understanding that, so trying to figure out how to coordinate this, we'll try to get some, a plan of action together and keep you, keep the board informed of how we're proceeding.
Okay. And then, Mr. President, Mike, I couldn't unmute my button, but I don't know, um, if it's appropriate sometime. I do have a question about registration. I don't know if it'll be for Mr. Clough or for Mr. Brown, but.
I think you could ask it right now, Dr. Diaz.
Yeah.
So, um, I just had some feedback from, um, parents. Um, the the registration process and I I guess this speaks solely to the high school. Um, but I I think the, um, I usually would think I don't have a high school student, but, um, the information as far as the ability to register went out on Monday, is that correct? That, and I can't give you the exact date. Um, but then it was due Friday, is that correct? Can anyone speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I can explain that, Dr. Diaz. It did go out, um, last Monday.
I couldn't find you. I knew you were here somewhere.
Right, yeah. No, it did go out last Monday and it was actually two, two Mondays ago. So whatever date that fell on, sorry, I've lost track of days in these, in this difficult era. Anyway, but it was asked to be due Friday. That was just kind of a like, uh, hurry up. This is kind of important. We need the numbers, this, that and the other. I had a student reach out to me, uh, earlier this, well, last week and asked if it was still too late and I said, no, by all means, please fill out the document so we can get our preliminary numbers. So.
Okay, I I guess, um, most of the feedback I receive is, um, grateful that you were still able to move forward with the registration process. And the only, um, two things that I heard, one, um, some people had a hard time navigating it, which is just sometimes we're not used to registering online. So I think that's part of it if it's a first time deal. Um, and then the second was that it was, um, a little bit difficult for some students uh, to really see. And I I think for a lot of parents, especially incoming freshmen, um, they couldn't see instructors' names or anything like that tied to the classes. And so I think, you know, I I don't know that that makes or breaks the class, but I I think having that information uh, would be helpful. And given that there were some that had some difficulty with it, I'd say that it was minority. Um, I'm just hoping, uh, just to give, mainly give you a heads up. I'm hoping we can be a little flexible, um, with those students. And then the last thing was, I don't know if that framework changes as far as the class availability and scheduling, if we have to accommodate the social distancing piece and change numbers per class.
Correct. And that last piece obviously will be more or less dealt with once we figure out how we're going to be starting school next year or so forth and so on. Uh, the other piece is, uh, as far as like tying an instructor name to a class and everything. Uh, we we haven't done that in the past because this is more or less pre-registration. So what we want to do is try to get in number. Now, I know you're 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 kind of right in the sense that, you know, if it's a certain instructor, will it make or break the class? That's a possibility. But we do plan to have another registration, like a full blown registration where kids would come in, providing we can do this, um, and and have them register for their classes in person. Again, that's all going to be, uh, hinging on, uh, where we're at, say like in July and so forth and so on. Last year we did kind of an arena style where the kids kind of went around and built their schedule. They got to see the teachers' classes and this, that and the other. Um, there was a little hiccup on that because obviously there are some kids that have high school experience. They know certain teachers and, uh, you know, they'll they'll pile into there before they fill up the other classes that we have to offer. So we got to be very careful as far as balancing it out. And it kind of goes back to your last statement is if we're under some kind of provision as far as keeping social distancing and the number of students in the classroom, um, we're definitely going to have to keep an eye on that, especially when we have uh, a nucleus of friends that like to schedule all their classes together and class together. And we know how that works out. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coker. I appreciate it. Sorry, that was a little bit out of order.
No, no worries.
Mr. President, uh, uh, kind of a follow up comment or question to to that topic, if it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, was that, was this just for the high school kids? Was it a course registration or was it for all kids or, uh, kids coming up from La Plata? Like registering to, um, like demographics and that type of stuff. I think there was um, some confusion on that with the term registration, if it was just courses or, um, you know, incoming, if it included incoming freshmen. Mr. Coker, can you clarify that?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, our our initial plan before, um, you know, all this took place was to have a, have all of our students, um, register online, uh, through Power School. And we had, uh, really kind of set that up. I know Ms. Ribetta and Ms. Windsor had been working on that program to get it set up and and Mr. Potts had been working with us too. Of course, this all happened. So we, uh, Dami actually kind of took it upon herself and 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 created the Google forums uh, to send out to the classes. Now, um, these are just preliminary classes. It's the only registration they'll do in. And it does encompass all classes that will be attending, uh, Silver High next year. So our juniors that'll be seniors next year, sophomores to juniors, so forth, so on. And then, uh, Mr. Potts was able to get us the email list for the incoming eighth graders to ninth graders. So all of those went out. Um, they went out specifically, so those specific forms. So if you're the class of 2021, those are the forms you got. The 2022 got different forms, 2023, so forth and so on. So, uh, but they were just for the high school and incoming eighth graders.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Clough and Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda, uh, letter C, Michelle McCain.
Good evening, everybody. Um, let's see. I'm, um, here to present the budget for the 2021 school year. And I'm going to have my PowerPoint showing up. Let's see. Can everybody see that?
No.
Now?
I see it starting. Yes.
Okay, um, pretty much I've I've, um, kept with the same, um, format that I have, uh, in the past years. And, um, basically it's breaking down the, um, it's called a nine, 10, B5 report, which is what PED uses to, um, consider, uh, the funds that are available in our operational budget. Um, and they start out with our, um, yeah. Okay, all right. Um, basically it starts out with, um, giving a weighted value to the number of, um, students that we have um, on our, uh, on the average of the 80 and 120 day counts. Um, as you can see with, um, the trend has kind of bounced back and forth from 2018, you know, we dropped and then, um, 2020, we picked up on, uh, kindergarten students and it looks like in 2021, we were down about 12 um, from the prior year. Um, our basic program units consider every, um, all of the other students. And as Mr. Clough mentioned, we have, um, an increase. He gave an A, um, 80 membership increase, but ours is an average of the 80 and 120 day count. So it's not going to be exactly the same as the numbers he mentioned. Um, when you're looking at those numbers, um, basically what PED does is they take the actual membership numbers, the number of students that we have and they multiply them by these weighted values. You know, kindergarten student is 1.44, you know, first grade is 1.20, um, second and third grade are 1.18. Um, the four through six is the, um, 1.045 and then seven through 12 is one and a quarter. And what they do is they take, um, in in the past, they had taken the, um, TNE, um, cost, um, uh, cost index and multiply that by, um, the unit value to come up with, you know, how much it was per student that they were funding us with. But now with the switch from TNE to TCI, um, that we have an average number this year, we're at the halfway point. So half of the value is, um, the training and education for our, um, teacher, um, population. And then the TCI is, um, the level of education, which is what we're moving to. And those two numbers are averaged together to come up with the, um, index to, um, multiply our, um, the unit value by. Our unit value at, um, $4,758.10 is what was given to us. Um, what would have been at our spring budget workshop had we attended that. But, um, due to the COVID 19 situation, we did not view, um, we we attended virtually, I should say, as we are here now today. Um, that number is up about, um, 3.76% from last year's number. And this number is also, um, used to, um, help try to fund the 4% raise that, um, went into state statute. We know that there's going to be a special session that's going to, um, look at the entire budget again and come back with, um, a new unit value. Um, they're hoping to give us the unit value that we had last year. Um, but until the session is over, we won't know what, um, what number we'll be working with, but this is what we have right now. And so, um, please consider that everything that I'm, um, telling you is based on, um, this unit value. And also on the fact that we were mandated to give 4% raises that at which time, um, right now, we're not sure and pretty confident that those won't stay in place. But, you know, we have to work with those numbers right now. Um, as we break down the nine, 10, B5, we look at our special education units. Um, those are, uh, students that are in either our gifted program or in special needs programs. Um, we take a value, uh, the weighted value of those and this year we're at, uh, 427.8 units. Um, we have our ancillary FTE. Um, we, uh, are at 420 units for our ancillary FTE. We are, um, right now relying heavily on, um, contracted services to help us, um, with a lot of the special ed stuff because it's just been, um, difficult to, sorry, I rolled too far forward. Find ancillary staff that want to work for, um, school salaries. I mean, we look more appealing when they're closer to retirement than we do right now. And so anyway, our ancillary FTE has dropped from, um, prior years. We have our elementary fine arts, um, units that are, uh, calculated in, um, the student counts on the 80 and 120 day. And right now we're at a 69.025 units. Um, our bilingual units. Um, we didn't register any units, um, for this, uh, on either the 80 or 120 day. And so, um, we come up with the average of zero units for those. Um, elementary PE, you'll notice that it has stayed, um, the same for the last four years. It's actually been the same since 2007, 2008, when they stopped, um, the public ed department stopped giving, uh, allowing us to count any additional units. And so every year they've carried forward the same amount from 2007, eight to current. They are now looking at giving us credit. Then they took, um, projected membership units. They, um, had us count those for, um, the upcoming year. So we figured that that's going to be something that they're going to be factoring in as they, you know, they constantly change our, um, the funding formula. And so with this, we, um, they're looking at, um, giving a value back, you know, we're allowing us to count the elementary PE units. It's, um, something that they had frozen for quite a while. So we look forward to seeing how that'll impact everything. Um, our TNE index, um, that was our, uh, teachers' training and experience, which as I mentioned earlier, they are phasing that out and phasing in the TCI, which is, um, the, uh, teacher's, uh, level of education, whether they're a level one, two or three teacher. And, um, the uh, teacher's uh, level of education, whether they're a level one, two, or three teacher. And um, I have, last year it was at a seventy-five, twenty-five ratio. This year it's at a fifty-fifty ratio. And then next year, of course, it'll go the other direction being uh, twenty-five percent T and E and uh, seventy-five percent TCI. Right now with um, the average that we had, um, the PED provided uh, a spreadsheet with um, where every school district or the hundred and eighty-seven districts that they reported on, where they rank as far as the value of their um, average TC, TCI and T and T and E. And we ranked fiftieth of the hundred and eighty-seven, which means that um, the perspective that I see is we um, had a very strong um, training and experience index with our teachers. And now that they're moving to level of um, licensure, you know, we're going to fall, um, see that um, our uh, index falls a little bit because we had, you know, relied heavily on looking for those experienced teachers. And you know, with PED putting more um, weight on their level of uh, licensure, we will have to work at promoting that within our um, teachers so that we can um, increase that value. Um, we have not had a national board certified teacher since two thousand and eighteen. And so um, we don't receive the benefit of those units. Um, I will mention that anything that we received for the national board certified teacher, we were required to um, in turn give um, as benefit to that teacher for re- um, receiving that certification. So that was something that flowed through our um, S E G to the um, whomever was a, a national board certified teacher at the time. Um, our ask at-risk units are uh, numbers that are calculated um, by the PED. They look at mobility rates, they look at um, poverty levels and um, things like that. And they uh, supply us with the number of um, at-risk units. And basically what they do now, um, once they um, take the number of units, they multiply it by our, our student, our membership population and come up with um, the number of units that will then play into our um, funding. And um, this year, our, we see a large increase in um, the number of units. And that's basically having to do with the, their constant, their changing of the funding formula. Um, school size adjustments, um, these are uh, additional units that um, they have in the funding formula. They give us those numbers. Um, based on the, the population of uh, schools of under and over four thousand student population. Um, the charter school units are the charter school um, students that are um, participating in any of our um, extracurricular events, either PE, uh, not PE, sports or band or anything like that, that um, they're coming into our school district and, and participating along with our students. Um, the previous unit, the, the are not to be uh, confused with our small school adjustment units. And those um, you can see, I know um, Ms. Garney has worked really hard, her and um, um, her staff out there at Cliff, at trying to um, increase their, the student population and really work on attracting, you know, more students or re- and retaining the students that they have. And um, if these numbers are any indication, I think that they're, you know, um, being pretty successful because at eighty percent, um, last year, we were operating at eighty percent of the total number of units that they would have normally given us credit for. And it was still higher, you know, by about four units than it was the prior year. And then um, this last year or this year, we're looking at sixty percent um, of the total va- um, number of um, students between Cliff and uh, Sixth Street that um, we are able to, to um, consider in this uh, calculation. And it's still not, you know, dropping considerably. So I mean, I, I think we're doing pretty good about maintaining the number of students in those two school um, school sites. Um, our homeschool student program, right now, we have um, point four hundredths of a unit. Um, I believe we, we get uh, one hundredth of a unit uh, or a value for each, we have four students basically in the homeschool program right now this year. And so that's their weighted value um, as far as the funding formula goes. Um, the, a new thing that was added last year, I think is a kind of offset to um, the shock of trying to, of removing the small school funding is they've added um, of rural population program units. And that, those numbers are numbers that the PED um, comes up with. I'm not sure, I'm not privy to the um, data that they're collecting in order to come up with these units, but they do um, uh, populate those numbers on my nine, ten, B five so that, you know, we um, have record of them. I, and as I say, I don't have, you know, how they come up with those actual units. But as um, they phased out the small school funding, they phased in the rural population units and they seem to be growing proportionally as, you know, they're phasing out the small school funding, these rural units are growing. So I have a feeling that that's kind of a replacement factor. Um, when we look at our overall um, summary of our, our revenue for this year, you can see that our S E G did go up and that was, you know, based on the po- the desire to give four percent raises to all of the educational staff. That was going to include everybody um, you know, from um, teachers as well as non-teaching staff. Um, so that S E G number, we do expect to change. We just don't have um, a feel for how much that's going to change. That'll be, you know, have to, you know, be determined with whatever happens in the special session. Um, our copper um, amount, as you can see over the past four years, that has slowly been um, declining. And so you know, we're working with the numbers that are provided for us based on the, you know, tax collection and um, the revenues that are reported by the, the mines to the state. Um, the local tax is our ad valorem, that's our property tax, that's the impact on our operational budget that we receive benefit of. We have the, the copper at the seventeen thousand four sixty-eight and the um, local ad valorem tax at the one hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And what you might make note of is for those values, you know, the taxes that we collect in those two areas, they um, reduce, they, they take credit for seventy-five percent of those and we, and reduce our S E G by those amounts. So even though it looks like additional revenue, they take that into the factor of our S E G and subtract out seventy-five percent of those. So we only get the full impact of about twenty-five percent of those taxes that we collect. Um, indirect costs are um, funds that we are allowed to charge the federal programs for administer, administering um, those funds. Um, you can see that in two thousand and eighteen, we had um, we estimated about a forty thousand dollar revenue and now it's about thirty-five thousand. Our access to uh, so many of those federal funds is um, more of what's happening, you know, we just don't have as many of those federal grants that are um, applied in our area. And so we, we can't take benefit of the indirect costs on those. And some of the, the federal grants that they do give us don't allow us to charge an administrative fee. Um, the next thing that we're considering in our revenue is our Verizon um, lease. And um, we're estimating, you know, we, we were guaranteed uh, twelve hundred dollars per month for e- um, for the year. We're we have seen benefit of uh, a little bit more than that. Well, I'm based on, I think, the revenues that they're making. I'm not sure exactly where we're going to stand with the upcoming year, but I know we will get the minimum of the twelve hundred dollars if nothing, you know, if not more. Um, our E-rate, um, Ben has uh, worked on E-rate um, and done a lot of hard work to try to maintain that revenue that's um, come in. It has been very beneficial to the district. It is money that is earned on um, the technology. Uh, uh, he works with uh, Sentrylink, um, the different uh, communications providers and stuff on trying to get us a lower, you know, cost for our uh, communications as well as receiving kind of a, it's almost like a rebate program in participating with um, our, our technology participation part of our um, costs. So right now, we're looking at an overall um, revenue of about twenty-four million ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which looks great compared to the, you know, previous year and, and um, is an increase, but by also, we have to take into consideration, you know, based on the, the positions that we had hired during the year. And um, the increase to the salary, the four percent increase to everybody's salary as well as meeting the minimum wage um, that has been uh, moved again to the ten and a half hour, um, ten dollars and fifty cents hourly. That'll take place in January, but we go ahead and make sure that that's if reflected on all of our salary schedules so that we don't have to make a mid-year adjustment to anybody's salary. So we've taken into consider that on um, the salary schedules as well as the four percent raises that were mandated. Um, another um, increase to the budget was our uh, medical insurance um, is going up eight point seven percent, both for employee and employer. So the overall impact is um, it's pushed our um, salary to budget ratio to a ninety-three point six percent, you know, as of right now. We will work diligently to make sure that we streamline our staffing, you know, so that we can, you know, keep that, the eighty-five to eighty-seven percent that, you know, is um, optimal for school districts. Um, you know, as to offset, you know, because you have to present a balanced budget, you have to look at also the expenditures that apply against all those revenues that I just talked about. Um, salaries and benefits being our, our um, biggest um, and most prized expense, um, twenty-two million five hundred and sixty-one thousand sixty dollars based on the four percent salary increase, the minimum wage increase and the medical um, uh, insurance premiums increase. So um, depending on what happens in the special session, we can, we will definitely see a change to that number because um, we fully expect them to repeal the four percent raises. Um, our other costs, electricity, we're at three hundred and seventy thousand for the year. Natural gas, you know, give or take a, you know, good winter, you know, uh, or a cold winter. It's a hundred thousand that we have budgeted in there. Propane is for our Cliff, it's at forty thousand. Uh, water and sewage is at fifty, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand for the year. Uh, communications and internet, um, like I said, Ben has worked really hard to keep a tight grip on, on where this goes. I mean, he's constantly working to not only um, keep the costs down, but to improve access for all of our school sites. So that, you know, we, um, our kids have the benefit of working on um, the best systems that, you know, are available to them. Uh, our insurance, the uh, we have our annual uh, risk insurance premium. That is a big hit. It's usually, well, it's always due in July. And so that's an expense that goes right off, off our books at the, you know, the very beginning of the year. Um, with us paying eight hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars to the New Mexico Public Schools Insurance Authority to maintain our risk um, property and workers' comp insurance. Um, I decreased the student travel budget because we're moving away from charging, you know, for mileage for the, the, the student travel trips. So we're just going to worry about having to cover um, the cost of hotels and, and meals. And I will work with our athletic directors to make sure that that, you know, the, the budget that we set will be something that is um, will work for, for our students as they go on their, you know, not only athletic, but um, academic trips as well. Um, professional development, I've cut down quite a bit, but we're looking at um, using our Title II funds to cover the cost of professional development. That and um, Mr. Cluff uh, has worked to keep it um, uh, for our membership with the R E C in Deming, which, which has provided quite a bit of our, our training for our teachers, for um, some of our ancillary, um, for, um, they've provided, you know, different um, items also for our, you know, personnel department as well, you know. So we um, will retain our membership for, through the R E C and use that for a lot of our professional development. And the cost of that membership comes out of our Title I budget. So that um, saves us quite a bit. Our related services that um, consists of any of the contracted services that we're not, if we're not able to um, actually hire speech or hire um, OT, then we look at um, contracting out. And so we have to have a budget available for that to meet those needs. Um, supplies and materials, we're um, trying to make sure that everybody kind of gets what they need this year as, you know, we have a little more time and hopefully a little more flexible budget to, to um, get the supplies that we need because we don't know, you know, what's going on, you know, what's going to happen next year. But we have hope that it'll be. We'll make it. We'll, we'll do well with whatever we have to work with. Um, we also continue to fund our backpack program, which supplies um, a backpack with um, a a, pretty much a meal for um, any of the students, you know, for the weekend. Uh, um, it covers again some snacks, some soups, um, uh, often uh, uh, like Chef Boyardee, you know, dinners and stuff like that. Something so that we know that our students that aren't, you know, able to, to get a, a good meal, you know, at home have a resource that, that, you know, they don't go hungry on the weekends. We also have um, N D I that comes in every school year and, and works with our students to um, present their program and um, also covering the cost of our J P P O program through the um, oh, through the C Y F D and um, the cost of our bio waste that, that, you know, the packets that are picked up from our nurse's office. Um, our board expenses are um, pretty much the same. I budgeted the same um, this year as we did last year. We were able to stay within those um, uh, budgets. And so we, you know, I went with that current expense. Um, dual credit and textbooks, we are now having to budget for our um, instructional materials in our operational budget. Then they gave us, um, PED gave us the caveat that if we do not budget for textbooks in our operational budget, we will not receive any additional instructional material funds. And so we um, are budgeting a hundred thousand dollars in the hopes that, you know, that will help bring in additional funds, you know, from the instructional materials um, bureau. Uh, we still have about fifty thousand left over of the um, previous instructional materials money. So that will be used um, if we have any adoptions that we have to deal with. Our um, audit costs, um, we budget the thirty thousand dollars, which we have um, spent a little less than each year. You know, um, for our annual audit that is required as um, part of running the district. Our legal expenses, we're budgeting at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, that's in keeping with, you know, what we've been spending in the last couple of years. And so we want to make sure that we have those covered. And then we have just miscellaneous other expenses that, you know, um, we have to cover the different membership dues, um, background checks, uh, uh, just miscellaneous expenses, which um, comes up to a hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And this um, covers what our operational budget is used for in um, as far as the revenue that is um, brought in by the funding formula and then the, the expenses that are offset. We have some um, additional funds that we are um, have available to the school districts. Uh, they are operating under the same caveat that we are in that we have to build the budgets for the federal programs based on the four percent raise. Um, we're not sure what will happen with the federal programs as far as, you know, we fully expect that those will come back with some changes to the amounts that we were awarded this year. Our Title I is um, for the first time ever budgeted, um, we were funded with or given the amount, the same amount that we were told that we were, um, had last year at a million ninety-eight thousand forty dollars. Um, and Title II, um, as far as I have seen, I've not, we've not received an actual award letter. So I'm not sure what that value was going to be this year. Um, Idea B, we have uh, we see an increase in that, but that also has to be considered that they, um, were considering the four percent um, raise and um, increase, salary increases on the, on that one as well. So we may see that one um, reduced just a little bit. And then our rural and low-income school funding, um, it's kind of a hit and miss thing. Uh, we apply for it every year and um, this year, usually we don't get it till the very end of the school year. We get it about March. And of course, COVID nineteen happened, so we don't have um, we, we were never awarded that amount and we're not aware of what the situation will be for next year. So we have high hopes because that money is used for remediation in the schools. They do a lot of after-school tutoring with the, the um, rural low-income funds. Um, our H B thirty-three and our S B nine budgets, those are based on our um, tax collections as well. Um, just depending on how um, things go as far as, you know, the state of New Mexico and, and where they stand with the final collections because, you know, you hear things on the news uh, about businesses and, and as well as individuals having trouble, you know, um, meeting their, their tax burdens and stuff. So you know, we hope that we will have that fully uh, funded amount of our budgets, but it'll also be a wait-and-see thing. But we are optimistic. Um, our future concerns, as I mentioned earlier, um, the transition from T and E to TCI. Is resulting in fewer program units that, you know, where those are concerned. It's something that PED has determined they want to do and so, you know, we will roll with it and we will. Motivate our teachers and and kind of hopefully incentivize them to. Increase their level of licensure till they are, you know, the top level of licensure that they can achieve. Decreased enrollment, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID nineteen, you know, we hope. That it will be a non event because, you know, you're, you hear that, you know, people are thinking of homeschooling and everything, but, you know, my circle of friends. Can't wait for their kids to get back to school and their kids are equally as enthusiastic to get out of the house and back to school, so. I'm hoping that that enthusiasm will, you know. Make any move towards homeschooling a non event. I do have a concern on the increase in the unemployment insurance because we are. What the state considers. Direct insured for unemployment, which means that they will bill us directly for any of the substitutes or any of the staff that are, any of our employees. That go out and apply for unemployment benefits, so I do expect to see a an increase in that, I just don't know. How quickly it'll be reflected, whether it'll come up in this next year's. Billings or if it's going to, you know, be another year down the road because they bill us annually for that amount. And so we will see, you know, once we get our, you know, billing, if it's going to hit in the twenty twenty one year or if we're going to see that, you know. Fallout hit in the fall, the subsequent year after that. And as I've said, you know, throughout my. Budget presentation right now, you know, we're looking, we're working with numbers that we are absolutely sure will be changing because. You know, our state revenues, you know, are taking a big hit because we don't have as many people actively working. So we're not collecting those income taxes, we don't have, you know, we're a tourism state and we're not having, you know, the hospitality taxes. That were a huge revenue to the state because and to the local. Populations because of this COVID nineteen. It is a new and different world that we're waking up in and, you know. We're happy to wake up each day, you know, because that means we, you know, are on the right side of this virus. And we look forward to, you know, working through whatever, you know, the fallout is from this. Because we're a small community and we've worked together, you know, over the years to overcome so many different things. I don't have any, you know, concern with us not being able to deal with coming up with, you know. Whatever changes we have to make, you know, whether it's with our daily lives or with our financial situations so that we can. You know, make it through this COVID nineteen and move on to bigger and better things. And of course, always, always with our medical insurance premiums, you know, one of these days they're going to say, oh, you're going to get a credit this year, but, you know, this is not the year. We have the increase of eight point seven percent this year and it usually averages about five percentage each year, so. It is always a future concern, the cost of the growing cost of our medical insurance premiums. And with that, that is my presentation for this twenty twenty one school year budget. I have a feeling we'll be revisiting this with some different numbers. And I look forward to having some good positive information coming from that.
Thank you, Ms. McCain. Comments, questions?
I think it was a very well planned budget, Michelle. And Mr. Brown and administration, I know it took a lot of prayers and tears, I bet, or I can imagine just preparing this. I do look and see that, you know, possibly with the special session. Session going on in July. Foresee changes coming up in in July, so. We'll just keep in touch with you and thank you for everything that you do and and Mr. Brown and administration, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Mrs. McCain, thank you for putting that together, I know it's been a challenge. And as you mentioned, we'll probably be having to revisit. The budget again and and programs and and a couple of questions. It looked like on as far as. Throughout your program, it looked like there was a little bit of a drop in ancillary units, is is that? One of the biggest areas, it looked like where we cut, where some cuts were made?
Sorry, had to unmute myself. It wasn't so much that cuts were made, it's the the fact that we're having a hard time. Getting ancillary staff in those positions, you know, speech language pathologists and stuff like that. It is so much more. They can make so much more money out in the public arena rather than working for a school district. And so it's hard to get them, you know, to to come on staff as employees. We start looking better to them when, you know, they're looking towards retirement and they're wanting that benefit, but right now. Just attracting, you know, people in that this area to those positions is not. Something that has been easy to do. And so we've been relying on some contracted services quite a bit.
Are those services, do you see is the trend decreasing for those needs or increasing or is it staying steady?
With the IDPs, I feel like we're seeing an increase in need, you know, there's just, you know, we have a community that. Has quite a few students in our population that require special services.
Have we heard, I know the federal government was looking at providing some. Some monies to the states and I want to say PED was going to get a share, have we got any idea, heard from PED what each district was going to get there?
No, sir, have not heard that yet.
And then another question, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Brown. Might might remember or might know, do you, have we? What was the timeline on that windmill farm? And receiving revenue from from that, once that got up and running?
Well, the the initial thought was we would be able to see some revenue from that sometime next school year. But it does not appear as though that's going to be the case, if indeed it does come to pass, it appears this can be the year after next.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Board of Education and we'll go with the Finance Subcommittee Report. Either Mr. Khan or Ms. Montenegro.
Do you want me to start it, Ashley?
Sure, that sounds great.
All right, so Ashley, Michelle McCain. Mrs. Alvarez and myself met last Friday. Michelle was just talking to us briefly about the budget, basically what she presented to you just a while ago. And, you know, it just, it's. Depending on just state funding, that's affected by the fluctuation of the oil and gas prices. Grocery seat taxes, personal income taxes, all of which, you know. Seeing the downturn during this COVID nineteen pandemic, it's. She presented a really good budget to us. I do have full faith with Michelle and administration and Mr. Brown on. These budget items. Like I said, we'll have to come back and revisit it, but I'm pretty sure they're they're right on the dot on them. I believe it's good having conversations with budget challenges throughout the state, through our district. So just a lot of communication, what's going out there, there'll probably be a lot more trainings, I would say, right, Michelle, Mr. Brown? As to what's going to be going on in the future. And just wait to see what happens. The unknown is is the scary part.
And so much is unknown.
Yes. I don't know if you want to elaborate on on more, Ashley?
Um, no, I would say, you know, I think Mr. Brown alluded to the fact that it is going to be. A tighter budget and I know that Michelle and Mr. Brown have been meeting and discussing ways to mitigate that and so. I would just ask that they continue to keep us informed as we move along, obviously that. That ninety, was it ninety six percent or ninety three percent was our salaries and benefits?
Ninety three point six.
So that number is up there and. The fact that our, you know, our income is going to go down, our salaries should go down about the same. Number, you know, because our, it was increased by four percent, so was our, so was our expenditures. That still, even if we reduce the income and reduce expenditure, when you do the percentages, they still work out to about the same. So I mean, I guess it's a little bit different because then we have to multiply all of those by the percentages for the benefits, so. There may, we may save some, but not a lot, and so there is going to have to be discussion around what we do to decrease that that number. Because that's what makes our district healthy. Just by getting it closer to that goal that we had of eighty six percent, is that correct?
Eighty five to eighty six, yes.
Yeah, so obviously we need to keep that in mind, I know you guys, that's probably glued in Mr. Brown's head, I know it's glued in Michelle's head and you guys are probably working together and. And going to make that happen and so. We appreciate that, that you guys are so aware of what, you know, really what makes the district healthy from a physical. F I S C A L perspective. And that you're aware of that. As far as the report, you guys will see on on my favorite one, on the variance report. You'll notice that our percentage of cash to our budget. Actually, I can't remember if it went down or up, but it's very close to last month. That means that our cash carryover from the audit has not been approved. Through those bars from last month and that's just something that Michelle is working with, the lady at the state, there is some discussion. Before that she'll approve that bar and then it will be budgeted into our actual budget. So if you guys were looking at that last month, I said, yeah, we're going to be closer to four. And then this month it's not, it's because it's not quite there yet. But it will be there. And the money is in the bank, we just don't have budget authority, so. Something to be aware of. I guess the only thing that, I had a few questions as I was going through that budget and then I totally dropped them. I know that this would be a hassle, but I just wonder how much savings. It would save us not paying the ten and a half an hour. I mean, it's probably miniscule, it's probably like in the thousands, not hundreds of thousands or or millions, obviously. If we delayed it until January and so, I mean, just. Thoughts as we're just, I think we have to really kind of get down to the nitty gritty, you know, and the other thing was on the budget expenses. For board, we will be doing a superintendent search this year and so I'm not sure how much more that has cost us in the past. I mean, obviously, if we can keep it lower, keep it, you know, maybe find some more reasonable. But that was something that I'm not sure that's in that number that we want to make sure to budget for. But that's, that's really all I had, we've, we've spent a lot of time just talking about that and so. I just appreciate all of our district coming together and working together and. You know, trying to get to our goal of that eighty six percent. It's not going to be easy and there's going to have to be some things that are that are changed and done, but I I know we can get there. And I also just want to mention that I know that there's work that's going on in the business office that has come from, you know, stuff that we've wanted to see happen for years. And that stuff is happening, you know, when we're talking about budgets, budgets and salaries and salary schedules and stuff, and so I just really appreciate. How much you guys are really recipient to, you know, you receive our input and you and you act on it. And that goes not only for the budget and for those types of things, but also for the handbook. I just feel like we're doing a lot of really good work in this district and the team, you know, the board that we have together with the superintendent, all the administrative teams. With Michelle at the helm and the finance and Barry over in difficult, you know, our capital outlet, I just, I feel like we're doing a really great job. And with all of those hands on deck, we we will move forward. Even given the budget constraints and we'll be okay, so. I just really appreciate that and and thank you to everyone that that makes us successful.
Thank you, Ms. Montenegro. Any other questions or comments in the board?
Thanks to the Finance Committee and and if I remember correctly, I want to say the New Mexico School Board Superintendent Search was. Somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Montenegro, Mr. Khan. Next on the agenda, the Threat Assessment Committee Report. And we did not meet and I'll just let the the board know, we we haven't met since the. COVID nineteen crisis and there really, really isn't a need to meet right now because there's no students in the school. Hopefully the restrictions are are. To the point that we can meet sometime during the summer before school comes back in August, but if it doesn't. We will certainly get together in a Zoom meeting and get the Crisis Committee together and come up with a. With a plan for the incoming school. Students. Any questions or comments about that? I'm not hearing nothing, you guys can hear me, is that, can you guys hear me? Okay, okay, great. Okay. I didn't want to just keep talking, nobody could hear me.
We're not going to give you a hard time this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it, okay. Okay, I'm going to move on to number three, Board President. And I'm going to do a second reading, so it's going to be second reading Policy Advisory Services. Policy Advisory Number two zero four, E E A E A. Bus driver requirements, training and responsibilities. Second reading Policy Advisory Services. Policy Advisory Number two zero five, E E A E A A. Drug and alcohol testing for transportation employees. And E E A E A A dash R. Drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees. And finally, E E A E A A dash E. Drug and alcohol testing of transportation employees. That's a second reading. My comments will be short tonight is. We're still in the situation we were in last month and. Grant County has seen pretty much, I think, a stable number of cases, I'm not in the medical profession, but I keep watching the news and we're about fifteen. Which we're grateful for, I mean, and I just want to say that. I appreciate everybody's patience, including parents, students. And staff and faculty because. This has been a trying time for the school district and we have come together and. In light of the crisis, I think we're going to look, be able to look back at this crisis and say that we did prevail and. Come through this crisis and hopefully things will get back to some sort of normalcy. Here in in the fall and I am praying and hoping that that's the case. For everybody involved and my heart does go out to the seniors. Both students and athletes and graduates, of course, obviously, because. They are missing a very big part in their life, but. Thanks to our staff, Mr. Coker, Mr. Smith, Mrs. Smith. They put together, I think, a great plan in light of the crisis that we're in and that's something to look forward to. I will end by saying that summer is is approaching, it's here already. I know days have sort of blended into weeks and. People don't really know, you know, where we're at, but we are in the middle of May. School is going to be over and I would just hope that everybody can. Take a step back and rest and relax as much as possible during the summer and know that. That you've done a job well done and it's very appreciative. From me and as a parent and as a board member and. Relax and come back in the fall ready to start up again. That's all I have. That's all I have, thank you. Um, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Um, you know, as, as you mentioned, uh, we, as we wrap up this year, a couple more weeks left in our, in our continuous learning plan. Thanks to all the, the teachers, um, the staff that have, that have worked, uh, through these, these times. Uh, thanks to the parents and, and the kids as they've, uh, hung in there and, and will finish up here just in a couple of weeks. Um, I think the, the, at least at the high school level is, it was neat to see the staff come together, put together some yard signs that were, uh, delivered to the seniors and I think the banners. And having the, the graduation, um, when, uh, we originally scheduled it, although it's going to be completely different than any graduation we've had in the past. It'll be a unique experience and, and, um, look forward to that. And, and I'm glad we've got the opportunities with, with not only Silver but Cliff and, and being individualized and, and unique for each school, allowing them to do what they feel best is, for their students is important. And, um, so thanks to everybody for, for that. Um, the other recognition I'd like to give would be to National History Day. They had, uh, their state competition and had, I think, sixteen participants qualify for Nationals. Nationals will be, uh, a virtual event, uh, as well. But, um, they're still competing and, and those staff members, both at, uh, La Plata and at Silver High School, are continuing to work with the kids to fine tune those, those presentations and those projects. And, and so kudos to them. Um, and I, and I think even if, if, even though the competition is going to be virtual, the sponsors are still looking at having, uh, potentially a trip to Washington DC for those that qualified. So that'll be neat. Um, and, uh, I think that's about it. Uh, I hope everybody stays safe and, and, and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Mr. Khan.
I just wanted to, um, show my appreciation for patients with the students and their parents. You know, it's an ongoing thing, going online, working on the packets, um, just trying to keep up with everything. Um, I know there's a couple of weeks left. Um, but I just wanted to thank all the teachers for continuing that continuous learning with not just my children, but the whole, um, child, all, all our students within the district. Um, I, I'm sad for our seniors, but at the same time, I'm, I'm very happy because, you know, there's community members that have done good things, especially on Facebook on adopting the seniors. So I, I believe this class has been well, um, with everything that's happened, they, you know, well spoiled and, and they need that recognition because it's, it is an accomplishment that they've done. So I wanted just to thank everybody that has participated and adopted senior. Um, it was nice to see Mr. Coker and Mrs. Smith come to our home today to bring, you know, my, my graduate, uh, a, a sign which we proudly put up on our fence. So I wanted to thank them again for that and for all the seniors, that's awesome. I'm looking forward to seeing the senior banners downtown and, um, thank them for their continuous, um, graduation ceremony. Yes, it's going to be unique, but you know, it, uh, I'm proud to be part of it. Um, also, again, thank, want to thank Rhonda Torres and all her staff, um, cafeteria staff and community members on their ongoing efforts and feeding our students here, um, at her, on her dis- at her district. Um, and I just, I, I found something out that was just awesome, I didn't realize. But I don't know if it's Silver High celebrating fifty years or if it's the El Portillo, for, I don't know if I can pronounce it right, the Yearbook celebrating fifty years. So I did talk to Mr. Coker and Mrs. Smith about that to see something, um, Silver High can do this fall, uh, maybe at a football game or, you know, if, if we can even do something just to commemorate Silver High's fifty years of existence. I know it was Western High in the past, but, uh, it's a big thing when it's just fifty years and it's just Silver High School. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Uh, Ms. Montenegro.
Really? I go before Michelle this far?
Well, maybe. Picture you guys on the board.
Oh, no, I'm good, I'll, I'll be quick. Um, yeah, I, you know, last, last month we talked about the silver lining and I think we've done a really good job. But I, I also know that this has been a trying time for some people in our community. Um, and probably a lot of people in our community. And so, um, just for people to know that they're in our thoughts and prayers and that our district supports them and that if there's something that we can do to be, to help, um, besides just providing the meals and stuff, I know that, that if they just reach out, we can, we can help to meet, meet those needs. Um, I think our teachers have done a phenomenal job of, of the Continuous Learning Plan. Our food service has done a phenomenal job of feeding. I know that there is, you know, aides that are working with students one-on-one that need it via Zoom. Um, there's just, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that, um, we don't even know or realize. And if there's anyone out there, obviously, that just needs something that our district can help with, um, just please reach out and make that need known because, um, we're, we're all in this together. Um, and with that, I'm going to let Michelle have it because she's good at that.
Thank you, Ms. Montenegro. And last, definitely last least, Dr. Diaz.
All right. So if I have to plug in, it's because my battery's running low, but don't worry. It'll help me cut it short. Um, so a couple of things, so, um, one is I definitely want to congratulate the N H D kiddos and those who made it to Nationals, but those who didn't, it's an amazing experience. And I think that's, that's probably the most important piece is the experience that they've drawn from even going through the process. So congratulations to all of those kiddos with N H D. Um, I, I definitely want to thank, um, parents for, um, working to, to try to work with their children and still perform their daily duties and jobs and still come home and do the teaching. I think, you know, that's been really hard and definitely thank you to our kids for hanging in there and putting up with us as parents because it is tough. I am definitely not a teacher, like I said before, it's not my calling, I miss for sure. Um, but I, I think our kiddos are really feeling the isolation, um, and, and, you know, making the most, um, out of it. But I really want to thank our kids for hanging in there with us as parents. Um, so that's one thing. The other, um, big thing, I, I want people to feel secure in the fact that, um, Silver Schools is taking this seriously, uh, the quarantine and the whole process and the importance of, you know, basically public safety in the public school system. And, um, our administrative team is working to move forward to put some tentative plans together. Nothing's going to be concrete because these things are ever changing right now. Um, and so it's going to be an evolving plan, but please rest assured that when you plan to send your kids to school, we want them there in August. That's our hope. Um, but know that we're going to make sure it's a safe plan moving forward when you do send your kids to school and that there are plans in place, um, to really.
Did she die?
Yeah, I lost her.
Uh-huh, I think, I think her computer died.
Yep, must, not short enough there, Dr. Diaz.
Hey.
Well, it was, well said what she was saying and yes, very.
And I, I, something I failed to, to add was, you know, our, our, the, the, uh, track was closed for a while and we were starting to get a little bit of, um, slack for that and I, and I reached out to Mr. Brown and said, you know, where are we? Where are we in this? And he had already been, you know, two steps ahead and getting with the city and finding out what they were doing in their parks to try to get that open for our community again. And so I think, just, it's even things like that, just working together with community that, um, is so important. Keeping people safe, but also, um, doing what we can because it, that does affect some people's mental health. You know, that being able to go there and walk and older people need the flat surface. So, um, the more that we can do stuff like that, uh, there she is. It just, it's awesome.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Mr. Brown.
They were all giving you a hard time for not being short enough.
Please.
I'd like more words.
Please continue, Dr. Diaz.
No, I ju- I just really wanted people to know and I think there are multiple layers to this. Uh, one is going to be the, the actual safety and, and social distancing and, and the hygiene and all of that. But the other, and that's the concrete portion, but there's, there are deeper layers to this, including, you know, the mental and physical wellbeing of our kids. And so I, I think, you know, just know that Silver Schools is considering all of those things, especially the effect quarantine has had on our kiddos from that perspective. Um, and, and there, you know, we are doing everything we can to try to collaborate as far as resources are concerned, to make sure that the whole process is enriching, but also just, you know, an opportunity to get back to our normal schedules, which I think will be healthier for everyone and, and, you know, the sooner we're to move forward, but safely is going to be the goal. So please rest assured that, that all of those things are being considered as we move forward.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, um, we'll move on to action items. Ms. McCain. Mrs. McCain.
I'm never going to get this unmuting and uncovering. I won't have a chance to get used to it, okay? Anyway, I want to ask for approval, um, for our, on the finance reports, I need to ask for approval for the checks written for the month of April in the amount of two million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred one dollars and twenty-nine cents. I also on, um, Item B, um, Budget Adjustment Request, I do not have any of those. On, um, Item C, we have, um, an RFP. That was for the, um, heat back, the air conditioning for the high school. Um, Barry decided that it was going to be more, um, it would be, uh, fiscally more efficient for him to separate that from the reg- um, the contract with the, uh, C Mar. And so we put that out for, um, a bid and we got, um, J and S, I believe, uh, was, was the responsive bidder at nine hundred and forty-three thousand, fifty-six, fifty-six dollars. And, um, that's for a replacement of the, um, P E H VAC system at the Silver High School. And then, um, donations, I do not have anything. And, um, conflict of interest disclosures, I don't have anything at this point. And Mr. Clough's transportation.
Thank you. So, um, I will ask for a motion to approve, uh, number one, financial reports, the one RFP under awards, bids proposal, no donations and one, none, no conflict of interest disclosures. I will entertain, I will ask for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Mr. Khan, any discussion? Ms. Hernandez, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Flores.
Yeah.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Number two, transportation, Mr. Clough.
There is nothing to approve for transportation at this board meeting, Mr. Flores, the board.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. We'll move on to, uh, Letter B, Consideration and Approval of Policy Advisory Number Two Zero Four Dash E E A E A, Bus Driver Requirements, Training and Responsibilities and Policy Advisory Number Two Zero Five, E E A E A A, Drug and Alcohol Testing of Transportation Employees. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Montenegro, any discussion? Ms. Hernandez, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item C, Consideration and Approval of Silver Consolidated Schools Calendar, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Montenegro. Ms. Hernandez, roll call, please.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, on to Letter D, Consideration and Approval of Cliff Schools Calendar, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, any discussion? Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Letter E, Consideration and Approval of Silver High Schools Graduation, I mean, I'm sorry, let me start over. Consideration and Approval of Silver High Schools, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty graduation date as presented. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item F, Consideration and Approval of Cliff Schools, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty graduation dates as presented being, uh, June nineteenth will be the first, um, date and of June nineteenth is not available due to the governor's, uh, restrictions. The second date will be July tenth. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thinking by Mr. McMillan, any, any discussion? Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item G, Consideration and Approval of Silver Consolidated Schools, Parent, Student Handbook, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Motion?
So move.
So move by Mr. McMillan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Diaz, any discussion?
I would ask, uh, that, uh, you know, this be, as we talked earlier, this is a preliminary approval and, and as we get further along, that we get, um, the discipline matrix to look at. And then we also look at, uh, the attendance, um, policies and the attendance, uh, guidelines and/or procedures in our handbooks and try and, and get all of those on the same page here in the next, uh, month or two.
Yes, sir, duly noted. Any other discussion?
Would it be possible to color code those when we're getting them sent to us? I've read that handbook several times, which I'm not opposed to reading again, but it would be nice if the areas that are revised are color coded, just to, yeah, impossible.
Either that, Dr. Diaz, I could do the italics with the support document that I'd send out, I can do either, so.
Okay.
If I try to do red ring, uh, coloring with my color blindness, you might not like the colors I choose. So I'll try to keep it to yellow and orange and those types of colors, so just be ready.
I don't mean to be high maintenance, it just makes for efficiency.
Yeah, I can do it anyway. I'll make sure I have the support document too, of the, of the section, so you guys can hone in on the sections that really got changed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item I, Consideration and Approval of Silver Consolidated Schools, Consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools' fifth full year budget. Two thousand twenty. Dash two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Any discussion?
Michelle, thank you to you and your staff.
Yes, thanks to, to Michelle and, and here again, I would. Say depending on what uh, happens with our special session. Um, we'll probably need to come back and revisit this and. And uh. Hopefully, hopefully it's not too bad. So thanks again for all the work on it.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item seven. Future meetings and proposed agenda items. Our, our next scheduled work session and regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty. I will decide on the work session depending on when we're after. Governor's executive orders. And um. Two thousand twenty school hall conference will be announced. And just an FYI, in the last meeting, I know Dr. Diaz had asked about home training. And when I reached out to. To Mr. Giann a couple of days after our meeting. Um, he thought I was asking about myself and I'm, I'm past my hours, but. I was explaining that it was for the other board members and. He said that uh, there will be soon some training coming out online. Just to be on the lookout. For uh, online training and I haven't seen it as of yet, but. When I do see in the email, I will, I will shoot you guys an email or a text, let you guys know about it. Um. That's all we have. There's no need to go into executive session. I will uh. Ask a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. McMillan.
On the next scheduled uh. Our next regular meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes, sir.
Um, what um, what, what is the deadline for the IDEA? Um, approval? We were talking about, I think, Mr. Brown, were you talking about a, potentially a special meeting?
June fifth is the deadline.
That's correct, June fifth. Weekend.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. We can look at scheduling once we have a better idea of where Ms. Hopwood is. We can contact you and Ms. Hernandez will be able to get the notification out.
Okay, so that's, I think that's probably gonna be too quick a turnaround to. To have a regular meeting on that same, same day to probably simpler just to. Have that one action item as a special meeting and, and be done with it, is it? Everybody's.
Yes.
I guess that's, we, we can do both. It's uh, either one. It's up to you as a board.
I think, depending on the budget. Because obviously, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna get. Notice that we may have to re- revisit the budget based on the legislator's special session. Is that correct? Michelle.
Pardon me?
Um, once we submit the budget. Based on the legislator's special session. We may have to come back and approve a second budget based on their numbers. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're really not giving us any um, direction as to, you know, are they gonna look at it as an amendment to the initial budget or if they're gonna ask for a brand new budget? With, you know, because salaries and benefits take up, you know. Eighty-five, ninety percent of a budget, so I mean, you would think that they would want to look at the whole um. Picture all over again and that applies to all of the, the um, applications. Title one, idea B, all of those have those four percent salaries in them as well. So I have a feeling that we will be revisiting the entire thing, but they haven't given us guidance. As for it's gonna be a change or a whole new budget altogether.
Okay, so what we do is we'll just wait and see what happens because. We may have two action items for that special meeting that we may have to have as a board. So, we'll, we'll just wait and see what happens, Mr. McMillan. Would that be okay?
I, I think that sounds good. Um. You know, if we've got to come back just for a one, uh. A quick meeting, I think that, that would be fine.
Okay. Alright. I will uh, ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Ms. Hernandez.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Ms. Montenegro.
Yes.
Motion approved. We are adjourned. It is eight twenty-one. I want to thank everybody for attending. Stay healthy and stay safe. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Yep, thank you. Good night.
Good night.